Busy IT guy.
IT guy, you ready? Let me get started, Ian.
What?
There you go, start.
I don't know. Done.
Thanks, folks, for going to executive session.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to recess to executive session.
Second.
James, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye.
We're just going to register the session as we're now in general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five eight dash one. Counsel's review, special counsel candidate to meet with Tom Manager for that.
Off we go.
You should take that off there.
Oh, boy.
We're not expecting chair.
Come in, everybody leaves. I had that affect a lot of faces. That's a good thing, isn't it? Today is what, seventeen?
Seventeen.
Yep, again, heck. Nothing at all, much calendar for tomorrow, that is good news.
Hi.
I should have told you.
Did you miss me?
They're in there doing it though.
All right, remember they just put in.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Ron.
Hi, how are you? How's anything better than? What's your saying, send me for a treat.
Send me for a treat.
How's James doing? Fantastic, good of yourself, good times, so you have a second?
I do.
What's all this? Yes, I'm not. I'm talking. Yes, she has been put the flag up, a lot of people, no, no, for, who wants to fight the thing. You all see that? The fact that she had done this, her husband had played with her. Cool. Just three, five. She knee, by the way, did she get the, I have surgery.
The surgery is done. Knee is a hundred percent, but like triggered sciatic and back and down.
How's James, she had surgery too, right, for her shoulder?
Looking for her post-op today, she's doing much better than I thought she was gonna be, the doctor said she's doing great.
Fine, great, I know that.
They showed us the X-rays, all the screws and the two pieces they put in there, about three pieces, two steel pieces and a plastic piece in between them.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess Dave was waiting to get someone to do it for him, he's supposed to be there, because they need to replace it. If you recall that old fashioned plus pizza, too, so I was always getting brought on that, so, I don't know, I don't know if she had a claim, someone called her about the five and a half being, I don't know.
She called Dave, even the original, I don't know.
I don't know, someone called her first, what, I don't know.
She was all over the place. She's taking a nap. She did. Yeah, if you stick around, I've got some things to say. My point is, it's like you know, we may disagree on something. Yeah, that's all. Go to the person, work it out. She took the paper. And I had issues way back when, and then much better than us. Yep, thank you very much. The month Friday before the vengeance day, they put me down in the party yet? Spoke to Jason yesterday, that's his moment, I'd like to give you. He can put him up, he may leave him up till, as you say. Our home policy makes you especially. They didn't have to get on the porch and force it. Jim Hurley, woman, he went to Chuck Safford five, and he had a script. But like, six. Yesterday competition today, Jamie from that. Oh, the president. What's? She. Was caused by, yeah. Oh, yeah, uh, all the, all the, that's right. It is a plan, IT offices on. It's such a big deal, but Brian saw some emails, maybe. What that? Maybe it's from House. There's a misinterpretation of. I mean, we stay in, we go, the next day, online. Yeah, yeah, I had some. Or suspicion, repudiate it, suspicion, this, this, where is it? This one says suspicion. So, I looked and I can't find the video. So I go and I look, nice agenda. Well, that, I read the agenda, so, looking at the calendar, Tom knows. Then I clicked on the agenda, and it said, cancel. I have never been able to, yeah. I go to all through the African town websites, go to agendas, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, nothing to play. Yeah, they're there, because that's where I go. Yeah, a lot of respect. I feel, and this. That's. Keep yourself up. Three. That, yeah. Blue, check. One of the most. I have sixty-six. Yeah, it's almost not, suddenly it was, yeah, you could project. The problems, especially, or the special, because of my, this time, focus on these cases. So, tomorrow, on the show. Okay, here it is, nail, best points. Oh, and she has, any, any. The outside of one. Yeah. Justin's got something to say. Citizens of war or something. Oh, yeah, too. This Brian Russell cabinet is, oh, it's. Jim would know this. What is this civic enhancement award?
Uh, it's a new trick that the, I don't know what call it, trick, new, also an award, which the environmental development commission has.
He's the organization?
Yes, yeah. Uh, what we've done is, we, we listened to all the things that came up and the things that were said at that open house we had here.
Yeah.
Um, and awful lot of people said, geez, you know, we need to clean up a lot of the front end of city, the building. So, we come up with this award for businesses that do things to make their, the front of their business make it more advertising.
And it can be the business itself, or maybe somebody else doing it for them, or whatever. Whether they get, like, get anything, or do they get anything as far as getting this award?
Just the award.
Just the award. All this. But the award will actually be issued by Tom Russell.
Oh, good.
He's, that's why we have it planned. Oh, that's good. So, it's supposed to be posted in advertising, somebody to apply for zoning law, member, all of it. Yes. Last one that I went through. Yeah, didn't realize the session, I know, one of the last council meetings they talked about, posting that. Nobody gave him a P. I don't know. Who sings that? Hey, how are you?
Hello.
Thanks, I heard you're on the plane.
Was.
Really, first Wednesday.
So, I didn't, I haven't made but one, I made one.
I think one I missed.
Yeah, made one, probably the first one. This, this is doing anything, like, now you're going to work, that'd be, yes.
You working the U T?
Yeah. Yeah, down this end, stay out of that mess up, see.
I had to go to East Village.
Oh, fun, 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 fun.
Never blink, I had to go on my way to our operations.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, we got out of there at three o'clock. Oh, I went north, ninety-five in a row.
That rough, that rough, I sent guys up there picking the truck it is.
What's, something going on tonight, that they're closing?
Four.
Is it roof?
Yeah, they're doing it in bridges, on, on, on East Village, yeah.
Where they drilled, uh, a we, U T direction.
Come on, they're making progress on bridges, they're, they're looking for a skipper, it's all of this.
Yeah.
He's ready, his boat's long enough, he's ready to go.
Yeah, he's.
You know what I mean, I'm surprised you guys aren't, yeah, I'm surprised you're standing around reading.
He could share less.
You know what I mean? And who's standing right on his.
They're gone.
Wasn't that, just typical, ask a lot.
No, we're crossing Washington Bridge, and I said, this guy from Alabama helped my wife, he was a hundred percent. Oh, that's good. She says, I thought I heard something about a bridge, this is what, two years ago, was England safe, they closed the bridge for a couple weeks, and they sit down.
No, Canada. You watch, all the same.
Go all the way down. Watch. I never realized that they, the news, two weeks back, they were talking about the week the tractor trailers carried, and how many of them, all the way down.
Hey, hey, how are you?
Hey, Dave, how many of those trucks, a whole way? Yeah, man, there's a guy that asked. Name Brian.
What am I asking, Dave?
Oh. There's a person, the, the actual story on this plaque. This woman's flown around and quote, I'm asked to speak on the issue, I go. Well, I can tell by the tone of your voice, it's not good. I saw him. I saw him. Is that F O W, when I saw you? A F O W date, you know what F O W is?
No, I don't know.
Amazon. Oh. How do you know?
He can't hear anything.
Now we have a new F O M.
Yeah, one day.
One day. We can keep going down that.
Yeah.
Something new after two, or three nights. Something new after two, or three nights. Let's go, let's go, say.
I'm gonna have something to say about that.
That's probably.
I don't know, we talked about it.
Yes.
Present real quick.
Yeah. Other one, let me get a real. Yeah, let it go, let it go.
All it is, that's me, I go. Open it, I work, summon me.
She summoned me? For what reason, why you don't there? Government thrust.
Great. Sometimes, sometimes I would dream of the nightmare.
Oh, wow. Yeah, any of the veterans appears office.
Two and one thirty-eight. Well, actually, we operated.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah, I did.
Ah, he's coming again. Let's see his cousin.
Good, good, good.
I'll do soon.
It's the most important one of my own.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who did they, ah, what I keep, what I keep?
We sure as hell don't have any street.
Oh, Jesus.
Very much, very much.
He's very happy in the house.
Yeah.
I was surprised to see when I was at, checking, well, Nathan K. It's something with a vine in it, then he got a TV, ancient.
Oh, yeah.
His name's mentioned a couple of times.
Where is it now?
Nathan K, in a beam.
Oh, really?
And busting on the bench. My wife and I called it, wow.
They were still, yeah.
Quite a character, yeah.
Yeah. You should go to town, be there.
Really?
Yeah. Was that a rain?
They don't stop calling me name. Who's that breakfast Tony at the cream? Who's on freezer?
Yes, for us, we're gonna do it once a month.
Oh, yeah?
Once a month, starting on the fifth of summer, not in January, no, the dinner, what day, Saturday, right, on summer. Yeah.
It's like, oh, oh, oh.
Which one now, the one with it? Just officially. Right? Oh, right.
Motionless, sexual. Now feel, she had a gauze hill. No, but I'm ready, I'm ready. Right.
What the what? I get something. Not true.
Well, that's why I'm like.
Now, uh, sorry about the US flag, I almost, because I'm fighting the US flag.
Oh, no, what else is?
Doesn't strike the US flag.
You know, we're fired.
Well, I'll say.
Yeah, I'm still doing it, too.
I so. I got some information, you can back me up, Tom, how many that I thought it should over the plan. Number seven.
Hey, there.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. I don't think we're gonna have to say anything. We already.
We can say, yeah, we're still working on it.
Say David can't be there.
I was told that, yeah. I'll find you. Mike's gonna Google it, he's got this phone on. Mr. Google, Mr. Google, yeah, Google the numbers. I thought, as long as the US flag is on top. That, that's. I'll stare as far.
Who's on the neck of the woods?
Who's the agenda show?
The, the light post stood out for years, and I need to please, I'll save them.
Eric.
I think I got a letter from you from the. Good for you, good for you, I say congratulations.
Um, was it, well. Two weeks ago, we should change it. Okay. Once you get there, change.
We just want a lane.
Oh.
They don't have the US flag in other patients. My other slide, I'm saying, slide whole, only below the US flag. I'm saying. Where's the money?
Monster. How's it going? Play this. This one, oh, that was. You know, I might more, I'm just waiting. I thought we want side. Now, the end of side, where's that? What we are. What's that? Your side works, your side work to go. That is like.
It's one billion.
Yep, yeah. Ready to go.
That's not.
Let's go this week.
Oh, yeah?
Why do you, you guys, you guys, you got the two people, right over the same? Even a half hour.
We're right in the middle.
Yeah, they, yeah, they go.
Free as well, eh?
Yeah.
Good, good. This is a recent video. Yeah, coming up.
Yes.
So that's.
This was.
Where's you? Airplane going. No, that's the information. Okay, this is the motion there. Yeah, we're in slow. What kind of stuff, I don't know. So, but I like some. One of the things, well, this year I do, uh, one night. The both of them, maybe more than one tomorrow. This, yeah, that's the guy, that's the smartest. I said, you see, you see that, that's another guy. That's what he, I don't know.
They even know it's my work.
Asians and Tony.
Maybe ask. Moral.
Two, three seventy.
Yeah, it's out.
Actually, maybe this patch. Yeah, those have problems.
I'm a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we should.
You know, this way, you know, I mean.
Yeah. See you. Can you get a bit of picture?
Oh, yeah.
You hear that something, do it for all. Right? Yeah, it's, it's back. The first time.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I was so happy.
We just did one today.
That's funny.
They split three man cap.
Some dollars.
Figure out, uh, you gotta come over, all these up.
Yeah.
Tell them.
I've got, you gotta rock up your shoulders. Bye bye. Go in here, numbskulls, come over and do it for some money.
Maybe. Either one of them. Dollar.
So I get a roll there.
I don't weld body panels. I don't, I don't weld my own body.
Yo, Mari. I wanna thank you guys.
Hold on, hold on a second, show yourself.
Yeah.
A letter.
Yeah, show them the letter. You can take it, give it to them. We understand, we thank you. So. Which one? Which one has?
I think they were trying to say thank you.
Take it with you.
I said, thank you.
I can figure out where it is. There it is right.
They all have a car. They all drive.
I thought you even have a license.
Oh, all three of my guys have a license. If they ain't got a license. None of them do bodywork.
Who does, who do we know that can come to my house?
Do what?
Okay.
It's bodywork, nobody wants.
Nobody wants it. I don't, I jumped guy next to pick the whole truck up.
You can't pay me in that. I didn't, I didn't do my own sport, man.
Who does a?
Up the street?
Across from the dirty. There's. Who was that?
Oh, who is? You know, nobody work. Oh, you know, the robotic tape.
I guess I'm welding myself. You're gonna burn that. You're gonna burn that old chick, old chicken coop to the ground. It starts somewhere. All right, ready? Jack, you ready? Just need you to show me how.
All right, I'll show you how, give them a tutorial, YouTube.
Oh, I'm good with YouTube, just make sure I get the settings right, so I'm.
I'll set you up.
That's all I want you to do.
I ain't doing it.
I didn't say.
I got, hey, I got a roll of that aluminum tape at the house.
Listen, man, the best tape I got is the stuff we use for the, stuff we use for the.
All the submarines together?
Not the. Not the.
What are we doing?
Hey. Not disagreeing with it. It's a great idea. It's excellent.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I think he's on board too. Figure it out.
Make sure we do it right.
Yep.
All right, someone brings back in?
I make a motion that we resume regular session.
Same time the town council president that no votes were taken executive session. Consider and vote, motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Motion on floor.
Second.
Motion on floor, second in favor.
James, I.
Davis, I.
Roy, I.
Burns, I.
Gary, I.
Good evening. Welcome to the Hopkin Town Council meeting of November seventeenth.
I'm sorry, we. Really? We did take a vote in executive session. Did we just vote that no, I mean, did we just make a statement that no votes were taken?
Yes.
Seal. Councillor Vought and motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Yeah, I think he's talking about this. Did you say that?
Second, seven.
But that wasn't.
Well.
I just go with what's written.
No, I, I, I know and I, I realize after you said it. I think that you can state what the vote was because there's no. You can, you. The Open Meetings Act says that if you vote in executive session, you can keep that sealed for as long as there's a need for, you know, to keep it sealed, to keep it non-public. But I think that you can say what the vote was that.
So I can let the public know what the vote is. And what we voted on.
Yes.
Okay. So the reason we went into executives, easy enough. Reason we went into executive session is to hire outside council to look and see if, what they can do as far as with the Hope Valley Elementary School as far as. Options for it. That's what we went to executive session for.
So, so the vote was to, to retain.
To retain services, Ms. Johnson, yep.
Yes.
All right. Everybody stand, motion to silence, meditation to flag.
Congratulations.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, almighty and justice for all.
Hey, councillor. Roll call, councillor James.
President.
Councillor Roy.
President.
Councillor Davis.
President.
Councillor Burns.
Here.
I am here myself, happy to be here. First up, public comment. Anybody?
Looking for the new uniforms, but I don't see any in that.
The shirt.
Oh.
We're worth.
Thank you. Paper not covered by that.
Or companies that love to step in up.
At the last meeting, I talked about the accessibility for someone in the wheelchair or a walker to cradle house. I spoke with Brian Ross a few days ago and he is working on a new door on top of that ramp. The door will have a push button. Door will spring out so someone will be able to access that building without a problem. It's nice to see Brian respond to that. I was hoping he was here, but I'm sure he's watching. I also want to comment on cradle field in that apartment, the whole area. I initially was gonna speak during the last public forum, but there's no flag. I really have concerns and I feel deeply about a flag. When I was being discharged from the Navy in nineteen sixty-six, many years, or most people born. Was at San Francisco and I witnessed protesters against war in Vietnam at that time. People were using our flag on our service members. Myself along with about thirty other recently discharged service people, you can see the ribbons that we had. Mike in the test of this when we dressed whites. I got hit with a tomato on my back from a protest. I was upset. I felt like saying, why don't you go over there? I can get a hummus that's real good. So when it comes to the flag, to this day, I remember the actions of what those, those people did. I do not share my feelings on social media, very seldom, but to begin with. Several years ago, I was concerned about how our town was playing a flag on a regular basis and on holiday. This was probably five, six years back. I obtained some information from the VA concerning the proper procedures for their handling of our flag. And I shared this information with our former town manager, not following police. I also had a discussion with Brian, he has seen this also. It really gave a breakdown on when you should lower the flags and so forth. Things really started to change to improve what we were handling the flags. One of our residents, Jason Teff, and his wife, May, I remember this, a couple of years back purchased flags throughout town. I was talking to Jason the other day, I go, "Hi," and he was replacing his flag at his business. And he told me that they would purchase flags every year from our town. Jim Hurley, TPW woman, I was talking with him the other day and companies was telling me that he had a conversation with an employee from Charleston flag. The average flag lasts about sixty days. It's just not made the way they used to. I'd rather see no flag instead of a flag that's all padded and ripped and faded. Our flags along Main Street and in Ashway take too much abuse to be up on Memorial Day, Veterans Day. I see some of them wrapped on telephone poles just being torn apart. I'm sure you've seen it going down Main Street.
Just for everybody's, not to interject Joe, but just for everybody's understanding what Joe's talking about. If you go to Hope Valley, Hope Valley has telephone pole sidewalk. We just have a little bit of sidewalk telephone put together, so it's a shorter difference. The DBW went from, what am I, a straight to the side and sometimes they work, but sometimes they don't, Joe.
Flags along Main Street recently were put up on the Friday before Veterans Day and they were removed the Friday after Veterans Day. I want to thank Dave Caswell, who's sitting here along with Jim Hurley and all of the DBW employees and everyone else that was involved in their hard work to display these flags. They really go above and beyond. Every once in a while, there's a bump in the road concerning our town flags, then I will mention that the day of Tim and the problem is quite quickly. One thing I don't do is sit here, my concerns on social media, I don't do that. What I do is I speak to the person that's responsible in charge of that. We have a discussion and the issue is taken care of. One final note as a reminder, December seventh, remembrance of Pearl Hopkin, December seventh, nineteen forty-one. Flags should be lowered to half step. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Gary. Mr. Williams, excuse me.
Gary, sixty which way hopping to? Wasn't gonna say anything, but I changed my mind. I missed, I missed the November third meeting, but I caught the highlights. I put that highlight reel recently. I just wanted to thank the councillors who voted in favor of writing. I really appreciate that night of flawed and candor for discussing the problems that you had at different points in your life. That was the courageous thing to do. I want to thank you for that. I worked for the state of Connecticut for three years, most of the three years was at the welfare office in Norbert. I was the person on the other side of the table who determined eligibility, whether or not people got financial assistance, whether they got subsidized housing, medical assistance, food stamps, heat during the winter. And I saw on a daily basis their anxiety, their confusion, frustration, their anger. But I also showed them gratitude when we were able to help them. And it made all the difference to them. It had nothing to do with politics, even though the time that it spent under a Republican president, Ray, who was trying to get people off of.
Goes back a little bit.
So again, I want to applaud you.
Thank you, Gary. Public comment going once. Reader, anybody online? All right, for approval of the agenda order, I think we're good. Consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minute, meeting minutes of November third, twenty twenty-five. Approved town council executive session meeting minutes of November third, twenty twenty-five. Approved much monthly report town clerk.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion on four, second, opposed, abstain, all in favor. James, I.
Davis, I.
Roy, I.
Burns, I.
Gary, I.
For new business. One, discussing through a possible bill to set a date for a public hearing where it announced that proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Article five, growth. Management ordinance, section one point three, excuse me, thirteen point five dash ninety-seven, back to date as recommended by plain department and sponsored by Councillor Gary. Chair Parrow, do you have anything you want to say about that?
Oh. Well, I run for office, anti reaction. The growth ordinance was pretty much taken over by the state. It was my understanding. I had words when there was a conference training session in Providence Saturday. There's more. The only time, right, because I told them the lady in front of me, I said, "The only time you need to hold your chest, both of the exits are switched online." Tell us what to do. You want to take things away. We have a group ordinance for a reason. And her response was, "Play the seven." You know. But I, I'm in favor of the growth ordinance. It does need to be cleaned up. It's all, we work on it a little bit.
Do we have a date on last time it was updated, Marita?
Long, long time ago. I don't know, last year you continued it for.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
Councillor.
It was about five, maybe five.
Councillor Gary, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, did you want me to speak to this? I, I asked Ashley Sweet to jump on so that she could also.
We got, we got Chair.
Okay.
Well said. Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. You just need us to pick a day.
Well, when will Ashley be ready with it? That's the question. I know she's been leading that effort, right? Ashley Sweet.
I'm here if, if I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So we have been working on the ordinance. Um, we've run into a little bit of trouble with getting Charahoe data. Um, the way that the previous ordinances or the current ordinance is structured relied heavily on, on a, on a, what was called a phase two report at the time that was being done by the school district for significant improvements across, that were district wide. That document at this point in time for, at least for the elementary schools does, is not approved. And so if we were to use the same document and keep the same structure, we would be using a document that's not currently approved. And so we met with the school district representative last week. They've provided some additional information and we're in the process of looking at that information and trying to determine if there is a different set of reports or values that we can use that are consistently available instead of continuing to use major reports that only come out every so many years where we would, you would not have the ability to continue to do the necessary updates that are required of you to recalculate that formula every year. Because it's based on information that's not updated every year. So we are in the process of trying to make that transition and to be able to base this off of data that is updated every year. We just need some additional time to do that. This was kind of an unanticipated problem that we ran into. So we're looking for some additional time to get this done so that we can make it a document that can be reliably updated on a yearly basis as required.
Ashley, do you know when, um, or have a clue for when?
So, so originally, your, your current extension of the ordinance that stands now expires at the end of December. Our hope was to have this draft in place and have public hearings to get it in place before then. Um, but because of this data issue where that's not going to be possible. And I think if we could do an extension to, I would say like July, just to be safe. Um, that way we'll be able to get the data from the school district. And as soon as we plug those numbers in and revise the, the actual ordinance with the formula, we'll bring it back to you. I'm, I anticipate it happens before July, but just want to have enough time because it also has to go to the planning board and the planning board has to send it to you. And then we have to do the three weeks of advertising. So we just want to build in enough time to make sure that we can get that done prior to that date.
I thank.
Do I make a motion that we extend the, um, growth maintenance ordinance update from December thirty first? Can I do that?
No, this is on the agenda to set the date for the hearing of the vote.
Yeah, that's what she's doing.
Well.
Not get ready for all of this.
We're not, we get this stuff till July. If she's saying, that's why I asked her, when was she, have the information ready before we begin to have a public hearing? That was the whole point that my asking. And she's saying July.
Yes, we have to revise it. The ordinance has to be revised. If, if the ordinance reads it, it expires in December.
Right, so we have to.
Right.
Extend.
But this is to set your hearing date to vote to extend it is what's on the.
No, that's the way it's. It says for a public hearing. It says, the vote to set a date for a public hearing. So I have a public hearing if we already have the documents from, from planning, that's why.
Right, but this is just to vote to just extend it. If I'm, am I? Right, the, the proposed amendment is just to change the expiration date.
No, this is for a public hearing.
Is that?
It says a public hearing.
Set a date for a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the Court of Ordinances.
So it's just even to just have it out there to talk about.
Right, to discuss, consider and possibly vote to set a date for a public hearing for the effective date.
Well, the, the effective date right now.
But right.
Is December thirty first, twenty twenty-five. We need to extend that.
Right.
Before we even talk about.
To change an ordinance, we have to advertise.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm just saying.
Right, so tonight is the night to set the date.
For what?
For the public hearing and the vote on the, on, on extended. So that you get that done before the end of the year.
You mean you have to have a public hearing to, to, to extend it?
Right, because you're amending the ordinance to change the effective date from ending at the end of this year to the end of next year.
December first and fifteenth. I need three weeks to.
So about the fifteenth, so, yeah.
I don't know that because I would count it.
I don't get it.
The, the, you, this is the, this is to have the, the, the amendment being proposed, Marita, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the amendment being proposed is to change it. So instead of ending at the end of this year, it will end at the end of next year. And that will give the planning department more time to, to work on the actual real substantive amendment.
Because to me, am I, my, do you have to have a public hearing to even do that?
Yes.
To change the date?
Yes, because you're still amending the order. Yes, so even if it's a very small amendment, you still have to go through the process.
All right.
Including the public hearing.
Okay.
Marita, does that all sound correct to you? Okay, okay.
I make a motion to. Set a date for a public hearing for a proposed amendment. To the Code of Ordinances, I, Article four, maintenance, management ordinance, thirteen dash five, dash ninety seven. To.
The fifteenth.
Set the date to December fifteenth.
Motion on floor.
Second.
Motion on floor, second, all opposed, staying, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye. Two, new business, update from. Mission on a civic enhancement award sponsored by Councillor Roy.
So, uh, we have had a, we had a meeting since our last meeting here. And, uh, we had come up with a way to. Kind of save businesses or not, like notice people and award them for like a civic engagement or enhancement of their property. So like on Main Street, you know how Mon Calvary did the outside of their building and made it look nicer and, you know, the upkeep. It's just a way to encourage citizens and businesses to keep their property nice and prove it, and it's just a way to recognize them. But we do have the chair, Sarah, here, and I believe she has a copy with you tonight. All right, well, why don't you, why don't you come up and?
Yeah, why not? Have fun.
I don't think that's on.
Yeah, it is.
Just loud.
So Jasmine described with the intent of this award, I did speak at the last public forum where it was. Presented to, I think I presented it to you, so just looking to try to. Main Street businesses. Continue to take pride in their space outside, primarily on the exterior. One of the small things that we're doing. In that process, we would like your support to give that, to present the award, to sponsor the award. And with Representative of the Town Council, we, we would talk to Ash. This is one of, we'd like it to be, we'd like to create something that we would be proud to describe on the wall in our business. Easy peasy, thank you.
Excellent, sounds good to me.
That's a great idea.
It's an excellent idea and glad you're. Glad you're doing this, glad to reel you back and get you involved in something. Kudos to Councillor Roy to get this, now getting this ball rolling and EDC has been, it's been a long time coming and we've really, we've really made some strides in the last two, three years, so I just hope it keeps on going, but thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we can share, um, the, I think it's the final draft for now, others, again, has a description on it, Council. To start, we'll discuss it our next meeting, but we're thinking maybe first of the year, once the dust settles with the holidays, we'd give out the first award and have a business.
Sounds good, excellent. Yeah, just for, just for us, you know, I'm sure Councillor Roy will listen, just send out an email saying, hey, Councillor, you're gonna have to explain this to the mayor, it's just, nah, hey, here's the date. Even secret squirrel stuff, so everybody's like, hey, what's going on over there? Thank you. Thank you. All right, public comment, going once, going twice. All right, I have one thing before we adjourn. Next week is Thanksgiving, we would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Next week, yeah, next week, yeah, it is next week. Happy Thanksgiving, nothing better than sitting down with the family, watch some football, eat some turkey, good to go.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Okay. Weren't we supposed to do the sidewalk ordinance?
I believe I put that down for December first.
December first, thank you. Okay.
Um, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of retired Hoppington Police Sergeant John Matthew Pack.
Excellent, yeah, sorry.
Anybody else, one more time for the belt to go?
No. That will find us.
We got. Push to adjourn? All in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye. Happy Thanksgiving, thanks for coming.